Are we live? So, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the November first, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Ashland Select Board. We're being livestreamed via W A C A T V. I apologize, we had some technical issues, so we're getting started a few minutes late tonight. But welcome for all our, to all our viewers. And, okay, so I'll call this meeting to order. And our first item will be citizens' participation. So if there's anyone who wishes to participate, please, you can use the raise hand function. Is there anybody here or come, or raise your hand physically?
I think Mike's birthday was, was yesterday.
Uh, I think Mark is raising his hand, okay. Mark, go ahead. I think you can unmute yourself.
Okay. Good evening, Mark Sully, point on Hawthorne Road. Let me turn my TV down first. Okay, that's good. And I wanted to, I wanted to ask about what I saw on the planning board last week. The discussion about the comprehensive plan between the planning board and Brandy Kingsman and Michael Herbert there. They came on, they were talking back and forth. Is there any reason to be concerned about this?
Well. Well, if you, you know, if, yeah, go ahead.
So, Mark, I, I'm glad you were on the planning board meeting last week. It was a, an interesting discussion, and I know that there are, there, you know, I think the plan might be for the planning board and the select board to have a joint meeting. We're gonna plan to have a joint meeting anyway in two weeks to talk about the MBTA communities process. But that also might be on the agenda as well. We haven't talked about it, so I don't know if that's, if we're gonna have room for that. But I think, you know, the, the issue that was brought up was the document that we had all voted on. And I think that that is definitely something that, that we can discuss for the two boards together.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Brandy. Yeah, I was gonna just bring it up under board reports that I did receive that request from the chair of the planning board to discuss those issues at our, our joint meeting. That's been tentatively scheduled for November fifteenth. So we can talk about that. But, yeah, so that's, I guess, the gist of it. And we'll be, I've not received anything officially, just a phone call, but I imagine that Trish is gonna send something and then we'll, I'll take a look at it. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, mister, yeah, mister.
Mark, before, so you said, do you, should there be anything that can, you, you know, should you could be concerned about this? I did not get to watch the planning board meeting. I did get updated about it. What I would say is, I don't think you, as a resident, need to be concerned about this. The project is still moving forward. The consultant knows what they're doing. The steering committee, you've seen a couple of the meetings in person. It's a very large group with a lot of interest and a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge. So I don't think you need to be concerned, is what I would say.
Mister Herbert, sir?
Uh-oh, okay, Michael. Well, do you have a different question, Peter, um, Mark?
No, he, no, he knows where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Mark, I, I don't really have too much more to add.
Oh, yeah, Mark, I think we answered your question. Did you have something else you wanted to ask, or?
Well, I wanted to see if there was any repercussions or anything that, that was understanding or not understanding at the time. And just wanted to see, 'cause I've been, like, I've, I've been going to it. I've, I've been wanting to be on it, on that, on, hopefully as a plan, but I've been sending out with fullest. And I have since ceased sending out dozens of emails, which I think Mister Herbert is happy about. And I just wanted to say that. And the, and the other thing would be the, there's, there's a meeting in a couple of weeks at the new Mendez Cafeteria Cafitorium. Where is it?
Well, Mark, I, I'm glad you actually brought that up, because as of right now, it looks like it is going to need to change, and it will not be at the Mendez Cafitorium. Just, we're still working out some of the technological features, let's put it that way, of the school. And we don't have, we, we don't have the new space determined. It might actually be virtually. And we're still working on that, okay?
And one thing I would suggest, I think we have update in the comprehensive plan. I was thinking of a general update, so we can think about, you know, we wanna discuss things under that one coming up soon, right? And your bus tour.
The bus tour.
Yeah, the big bus tour, so, okay. Anyone else for citizens' participation?
Okay, I'm done in saying.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Happy, happy, happy after Halloween, happy after my birthday, which was yesterday.
Great.
I made it through scary sixty-six years, now I'm at sixty-seven. Thank you.
All right, great. So the next item on the agenda is to vote to close, sign, and post the special town meeting warrant for November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. So, Jen, you wanna, or Michael, gonna present this?
So it's a pretty straightforward warrant for our special town meeting. We always start with free cash appropriation. The only difference between what you have in front of you and what we will post is that typically, when I went back and looked at our old warrants, we started putting the, the table that shows the account breakdown. So that has to be part of the, the motion, but sometimes we don't post the full warrant book until, you know, a week or so before. So we've included it in the, in the actual warrant that's posted once you close it. And so our free cash total is one million, seven hundred and forty-three, six, four, eight. And so that breaks down using our policies for twenty-five and twenty-five thousand into our general stabilization fund, five hundred and fifteen, five, nine, four in the O P E B trust account. Two hundred thousand will go to sped stabilization account. And nine hundred and thirty-one, six, eight, nine will go to capital. And then this year, I think that we have discussed the opioid settlement funds that we had received. The way that that was set up, it sort of fell to free cash, because there wasn't an, an account yet that we could, that we could set up, that we could roll it over, um, year to year. And so we are going to allocate the seven, seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for the opioid settlement activities and back into our account, so that we can do some of those activities over this year, so.
Yeah, could I just, I'm not sure I understand that. So we, we're supposed to get funds from the settlement, but?
We, we are, so it came to us, and then we, we didn't expend it in that, that fiscal year. So we don't have like a revolving account or another account that we're able to sort of roll it year to year.
So did it end up in free cash?
It did, yeah, so we're just taking it and re-appropriating back in for the, for the reasons, yeah, sorry if I wasn't clear.
Yeah, D O R hasn't authorized communities to put it in a revolving account or receipts reserved account yet. So that's why we're having to go about it this way. It's not like we missed setting up an account, it's, D O R has missed setting up some guidance.
So that one point seven billion dollar number, that total that you ran, is that inclusive of the opioid, or is that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure, okay, thanks.
Question, just question on the opioid, is that something a recurring settlement that we think we're gonna be seeing every year, or, oh, okay?
Yeah, for several years. Actually, there's a couple of settlements that we were a part of and participated in, and this is one.
Okay.
Where would that money be earmarked for? Would that go towards border health programs and things of that nature?
Human services, okay. And human services, so.
Yeah, so as part of the new, like, the, sort of the, under Christian French, we have the Department of Prevention and Human Services, they'll be doing a lot of work.
Okay, cool, so they can start new programs or whatever and follow through. Thank you.
One last question, 'cause our packet, will we see what capital is gonna be done?
Yes.
Okay.
You mean the capital projects?
Yeah, 'cause there's amount for capital that we need to, okay.
And you said the, the full packets posted and?
Will be once we vote it.
Oh, once, okay, but it's in the full packet that you're gonna post? And then are you guys gonna send a follow-up?
Yeah, we're meeting with ThinkCom next Tuesday.
And so we'll go over some of the capital then, and then the final amount.
Can you shoot an email of all those trigges and stuff?
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Yeah, I can send this updated, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
Um, the second article is just the property tax exemptions for eligible seniors, which we do.
Thank you.
Article three is the senior tax work-off program. And that's just to sort of reaffirm our, our program. And then this year, there is, we're asking to be able to, be able to extend the number of hours that seniors can work, and then also the, the cap amount that they can earn. So right now, I think we cap it at seven fifty. The law allows us to cap it at fifteen hundred, and actually, even this year, they went to two thousand, but we thought the fifteen hundred at this point. And it also allows them to work a hundred and twenty-five hours, and right now, it's capped at a hundred.
Okay.
Article four is accepting a donation of land for Zero Fountain Street. It's about ten thousand or eleven thousand square feet. I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that bit.
No, well, just, this is a donation that Bill and Carolyn Bell had offered. This is land that Bill Bell's father had acquired. And I guess, back in the day, he was a fairly prominent developer in town. And so he still has some pieces of property that he bequeathed to, to Bill and Carolyn. And so this is about a ten thousand square foot property. It's landlocked, but talking to Becca and Sophia, our conservation agent and assistant conservation agent, they thought it provided a lot of habitat value, because it's very wooded. It's, it's in the middle of a neighborhood, but it's very, very wooded.
Where is it? Zero Fountain Street?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of sandwiched between that, and is it Bellevue? I wanna say it's Bellevue Heights, but I could, could totally be wrong about that.
So is that the Framingham end or the other end?
Framing, you know, Fountain Street, I mean, it's towards the eastern part of town, yeah, so.
Well, I mean, it's Zero Fountain Street, so it's either one end or the other, but I don't know what way the numbers run on Fountain Street. So is that coming from? So coming from Framingham, Fountain, where Fountain Street starts, right side or left side?
It, it doesn't really work that way.
Oh.
It's, so you have a number of parcels that, you know, have, for some reason, they're, they're unclassified or don't have a direct street address, because they haven't been built upon.
Okay.
And so they haven't been assigned an address. So like I said, this is actually sandwiched in between a subdivision, which I believe is sandwiched itself between Bellevue and Fountain Street.
Okay.
So Bellevue's the other side?
Yeah, Bellevue's right, like, at Mendez, one from Fountain Street.
So it's probably like, so like Jody Road, which is in Framingham, it's probably like right when you get over the?
Yeah, I wanna make sure I have the rights, right subdivision.
Yeah, it'd be good to see, like, see on a map as to where it is.
I was gonna say, like, if.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a map, and it'll be.
Yeah, 'cause you'll get all these questions.
It's not, it's, is it not budding the current Bell property, right?
No.
So it probably is the Framingham end, 'cause the other end is their property.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not surprised by that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So Article five is accepting an easement at one oh seven High Street, and that is just to allow our D P W access on, I think it's twice a year, to be able to mow the property that we, the town-owned property behind those homes that we didn't otherwise have access to, so.
Known as Zero High Street.
That's funny.
And that's part of the property that was given to us through the U G C deal?
No.
No, this was.
No, it's not near there, it's up the street.
Yeah, this is probably closer to the, yeah, the intersection with Whitmore and High Street. But it's, it's a property that was gifted to the town, I believe, back in the nineties. I'll have to check.
Nineties, yeah.
And as part of that gift, you know, one of the responsibilities of the town was to maintain that twice a year, so.
Okay.
So this helps facilitate that.
Article six is to authorize a home rule petition to increase the liquor license. As, as previously discussed, we're hoping to increase by sixteen licenses for alcohol. So this would give the board the authority to move through that home rule petition process.
And this is just for on-premise, right? We decided not to look at?
Oh, yeah, we never did, what did we do?
The off.
It's, yes, it's on-premise consumption, yeah.
Right, I'm just verifying.
Right, no, that's good, yeah.
This is like restaurants, right, yeah.
This is that big increase, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This is select board, is it, I'm sorry, go ahead, Brandy, you have a question?
Like, I was just gonna ask, like, I assume there'll be a presentation kind of outlining, outlining, like, our rationale behind how we got to that number and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And who would, I guess, who would do that presentation? Is it one of us, or is it Beth and you, or?
Well, I think, I think you can certainly lead into it and, you know, talk about the rationale behind it and, you know, why you wanted to move forward with this, and then we could fill in the details as necessary.
Would it make sense to have Beth there? To do, 'cause I mean, she's the one who sort of did the research to determine what would be good amount and?
She'll probably be there anyway, right?
I just think it's, I think if, if I'm a resident and I'm looking at it and I'm saying sixteen liquor licenses, I think the gut reaction is, oh, God, like, how, like, what, what is, you know, so I think, I think we need to be thoughtful on how we present it. So I just, you know, I, I don't mind, I don't mind one of us doing it, but I do think to Yolanda's point, I think, I think if there's like a formal presentation about it, I think that's probably the better route to go.
Yeah, or at least the, the backup that we saw with some sort of estimate of why this is good.
Yeah, I, I think if we presented something that talks about the amount of licenses we have left, which is not that many, the fact that this is not really an uncommon request for cities and towns nowadays, and then talk about how it impacts economic development?
With potential growth down the road.
Exactly. I think that would cover basically what you're, what you're thinking we're gonna get questions about.
Right.
Other by, exactly, exactly.
What's interesting is Boston is about to do the same thing to the state.
It is a significant increase, and I, if I was sitting there, I'd be like.
I'd be like, well, that's, that was my reaction when I first saw it.
What, what?
No blue laws in Ashland.
Yeah, and I mean, I, you know, the, the warrant is relatively light, you know, and I think the only things that are really going to bring people to town meeting, like, like issues are potentially this, and then people coming out for the C P C for the dog park.
In support of, yeah.
So, but, but I could see, I could see people not understanding where.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that's, that's already, that's actually already happened, Brandy, because I've had several businesses in town, liquor businesses, question, why do we need more?
Yeah, really.
Why do we need more? You know, so, but they don't realize.
I've heard from off-site sales, not other restaurants.
That's what they need to, that's what they need to know, so they're a little confused themselves. So having a better description and understanding may, you know, answer a lot of their questions and ease their concerns, so.
But that remind, were you thinking about having a forum for, not a forum, but a info session?
Yeah, we'll do our standard, you know, like info session.
Town managers.
Yeah, okay.
Article seven is a C P A funding to construct the dog park, so they voted to utilize two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from their open space account. That would have to be expended by the end of June, twenty twenty-seven for that project.
So.
Yes, we'll, we'll have to be, it'll have to be done before then, but, yeah.
So another thing we really need is we need an acceptable maintenance plan before this happens. I mean, I don't wanna be like the, what is it, the skunk at the lawn party?
That's about right, yeah.
But.
At the garden, I think.
Yeah, we'll go garden party.
Yeah.
But we're still waiting.
Is it the dog park committee that's coming up with the maintenance plan?
Yeah, so, yeah, they've sent us sort of a broad outline, I need to, you know, but it's sort of, maybe they could fundraise for some of the materials, but much of the work would be, at least they're asking that it would be done by D P W. So I need a little bit more detail on what that actually is, so I just need that before town meeting, I think that's important.
Yeah.
This is obviously a bigger lift than.
It's a lot of poop to scoop.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah. I think they'd be responsible for the inside, yes, like, they'd have to be responsible for the inside, certainly.
I mean, the whole, just, yeah, sorry.
Dog, yeah, anyway, yep.
Article eight is to extend the Riverwalk funding that has been previously authorized by town meeting to extend it through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and that is it.
What's the remaining balance of those funds and what needs to be done?
So there, there is for the C P C funds, there is about eighty-five thousand that's allocated to the Riverwalk. And that would be coupled with other funds that we have to do the second phase. So initially, we had hoped to either cross, initially we had hoped to cross F F W because of the floodplain change that wasn't going to work, really feasible. We started to really look at making a crossing at Marathon Park. Um, there's a, there's a pretty large wetland that had to have a boardwalk, which, when I got the last estimate, it was, it was pretty substantial. So what, what this would be used for initially would be to bring back on an engineer, look at that possible, but then also, is there a possibility just to sort of go up Ponderosa and make a safe loop? Lots of people sort of loop, go for a walk and then loop into a sidewalk at least, or, you know, loop into the bridge crossing.
Right, 'cause there's the, there's the pedestrian bridge there, and then there's sidewalks and?
Yeah, you'd wanna be able to reach the, the station, right?
Safely, so is there a way that we could potentially have a path that sort of skirts along the Ponderosa side of the river? And so that would be used for that.
That would be nice. Do you anticipate making a presentation that includes that kind of information at town meeting, or like what's?
I think it's just an extension, so.
So it's really a simple extension to finish what?
To finish the Riverwalk.
So basically, it's saying we have eighty-five thousand dollars left, and it would, it would go away unless we extend the allowance to use that money, so that's what we're, that's all this is doing.
So that's all it is, that's why I was, so, but this other stuff you're talking about is really interesting. Is that part of, you know, is that the next phase, or?
That would be the next phase, this, this allows us to access this money to do that next phase.
Okay, so I think you should at least think about talking, you or whoever, you know, laying out that kind of vision, like, oh, yeah, we wanna do, we're looking at a bridge, or we're looking at a connection.
So here's, here's the concern, the more detail you put, then people will go, they're gonna, they're gonna have questions. And all this, all this is doing is saying, we have eighty-five thousand dollars left to do some work on this project, and all we're asking is for permission to not sunset those funds, but extend it to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, all right, well, I still think it's good to lay out the kind of vision to people and just say, this is, you know, this is just what we're planning on doing, so, anyway. Okay, any other questions about the warrant?
No.
Are we ready to vote on it?
I move that we vote to approve, to close, sign, and post the special town meeting warrant for the meeting happening on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty-ninth, Rose, no?
Go ahead, you got it, miss.
I'll, I'll second that, yes.
Motion has been made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none? Motion passes unanimously? All right, thank you. And we have the actual warrant to be signed here.
Yep.
Which actually, I'll just start that around. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discuss granting funds from the selectmen's gift account for the employee recognition event held in December, and discuss the date.
Okay, so, so, yes, typically, we do this in December. So just, you know, from a date perspective, start thinking about a date that would, would work for you then. This year, we're gonna ask for three thousand dollars to, for both the food and the gifts associated with the recognition. Last year, it was about twenty-eight hundred, so looking at just kind of some cost increases and the number of awards.
Three K, yeah.
Three K would be sufficient.
So what date are you looking at? I know last year it was like the second Friday.
Susan, did you have a date in mind? We didn't have a chance to touch base on that.
Well, I would say either the first or the eighth. The first might be a challenge, just because Thanksgiving runs so late in town meetings, so the eighth is probably likely a better date.
I would, I would agree with that.
So we're talking Wednesday, the?
No, Friday.
Friday, oh.
So that might be tough, Susan, 'cause we got our department head meeting on the eighth, and we're gonna miss the November one.
Okay. So we can push it, I wouldn't push it later than that. So we can do the first, if you think that works best.
Okay, do you move the department head meeting on Thursday, or no?
I could, eh, you know what, we could look at moving that to the following Friday.
Okay, so we're gonna do the employee recognition on December eighth, perfect.
Oh, it is the eighth, okay.
I move.
Is that noon?
No, it typically starts at like eleven.
Eleven.
Yeah. I move that we approve a not-to-exceed amount of three thousand dollars from the selectmen's, from the select board gift account for the employee recognition event and holiday event on twelve eighth.
Motion's been made in second by Claudia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? None, motion passes unanimously. Okay, so the next one is update on the comprehensive plan bus tour that took place, but also I would just add any other updates on the comprehensive plan that people care to make, so take it away.
Yeah, I can do the bus tour. So we, the comprehensive plan steering committee, or eighteen of us, which actually wasn't a bad turnout considering the weather, went on a site visit, quote unquote, and essentially, it was a town tour. And first of all, I have to give thanks to Ed Berman for securing the bus and driving the bus. Kate Jersey also made us little field trip goodie bags.
I saw that, it was in the picture, I was wondering.
But it was actually, I thought, really good. We went, we didn't get to spend time at, a lot of time at every site, but the purpose was to really give people, especially those who aren't familiar yet with all of the projects and, you know, the history of the town and everything. It was to at least give them an idea of where things are and what they look like and what they are, and at least a little bit of the history behind the projects. And the feedback that I had received was that we accomplished that, and it was great. We had an opportunity for other steering committee members to, you know, provide input, so it wasn't just me talking the whole time, which is great. So, and I don't know Brandy or Yolanda if you wanted to add anything to that.
I, I unfortunately had to cut it short, 'cause I had to go get ready for the hunt, but I like the idea of it. I'm, I'm glad to see that it is up on the website, so that if people want to go do the tour themselves, they can go do that. So I think, and, and as you said, I think for those people, for those committee members who are not as familiar with Ashland, it gave them a lot of good history and insight into our town.
And I would definitely agree. I think that it was, I mean, I learned things, and I feel like, you know, Yolanda and I are probably on the, we're more in the know from a lot of these projects than some other people, but the feedback that I heard was that people really appreciated the background, because it gave everyone kind of like a baseline knowledge of what's happened in Ashland over the last, I mean, you know, really since the last comprehensive plan, but the last ten, ten, fifteen years, you know, even the history of Fafford Development. And people hear the name Fafford, but they don't understand what that really translated into. And, and so it was, it was a, it was a really good, it was a good, it was a good few hours. We, we got out of the bus a few times, it was really cold.
Yeah, not, not a great day.
Cold and wet, but, but it was, but it was a, it was a good, good tour, and I think that, I think it was well worth the time in, you know, thank you for putting all that together, 'cause it was a lot of work. And then the notes that Yolanda talked about are up on the website, and also, not only is it like the sites that we visited, but just some background on some of the things too, so people can basically get a little bit more, more background on things that, that we saw, so it was good.
I guess the only thing for me was I was sad that you did my side of town first, 'cause I'm much more familiar with stuff there, and then you went to the other side, so I'm like.
I tend to think about that, Yolanda, sorry.
That's okay, I was only one person, it didn't matter, but.
That's great, good. But, yeah, I mean, I know there's a couple of other updates, but, but the other members of the steering committee.
Anything else, anybody wanna talk updates with the comprehensive plan? Things seem to be moving along pretty well, so, you know, you got the, it's not a forum, what is it? The info, info session coming up?
It's a public forum, so it, it's a.
It's a public forum. So it's, it's a, it's a different kind of forum, so it's not a presentation. It's, um, more like a pop-in, pop-out.
Open house.
Okay, open house. Um, so I think the, um, it's twelve, so it's on, um, December second from twelve to four on the lower level of Town Hall. Um, and it's going to be, you know, kind of, people kind of understanding what the plan is gonna be and providing some input and feedback. Um, I know that the, the working group met, I think, yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and kind of came up with sort of the, the umbrella of what this is gonna look like. And it's, it's our first, um, real opportunity to ask for feedback from, from the public. And we encourage everyone, that's the same day as the holiday stroll. There's a lot going on that day. So as you're kind of in and out in Ashland, um, come, you know, especially Town Hall, which is part of the stroll, come downstairs and, and, um, provide your feedback for, uh, for the comprehensive plan. And then, you know, the only other thing I, that I have is, um, that, uh, we had our last newsletter that went out yesterday. Um, I would encourage folks to, to subscribe to the newsletter if you haven't already, but, um, it's a good way to get information and, and kind of a summary of what's happening with the group. But it's, but things are moving, things are moving along.
The consultant has the website up, so that was good to see. And they're also then meeting with people that they consider knowledgeable in certain areas. I know, Rob, you're gonna be doing that, so. And I would say for the event on the second, it's really a pop-in. There's gonna be information, there's gonna be members from the, from the committee there, telling you what you're looking at. And it's really, we're trying to get as feed, feedback from as many residents as possible. It could, you could spend five or ten minutes there, or you could spend a half hour there. It's really your choice on the questions that you have and how, how detailed you wanna get in responses. The consultant was very, thought it was a great way to get people in. It's not your typical, what we've done in the past, right? You sit for a half hour or forty-five minutes and then you interact. Um, certainly this time of year, to try to get people to commit to another hour and a half meeting, it's a lot. So here, they're, they're hopefully coming into the building anyway to do some shopping or just to look. So they'll, will, and there'll be signage and there will be people around to encourage them to stop in downstairs as well. And if all they wanna do is stop in, they can come in the back door and just go right down the stairs, so.
And I feel pretty confident that, uh, there will be activities for kids to participate.
Yes.
So I, I spoke with, uh, the president of the Moms Club today, and, uh, she was really excited about the possibility of, of partnering on this. And, uh, she just needs to meet with the full board. And, uh, you know, other than that, I think, I think, you know, things are going really well, actually, with the steering committee. I mean, it took us a couple of meetings to kind of get our feet underneath us. And, you know, there's still some outstanding things that the, that we're working through. But, you know, the last two meetings, I think, you know, the energy and enthusiasm leaving those meetings has been exponentially more than what we had in the previous four. So we're definitely going in the right direction, so.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Um, there's no other discussion there. We'll go on to the trails update. And, um, I'd suggested, we had a, a number of, well, a couple, two, two kind of meetings or events regarding, um, trails, uh, this past week. Um, and so, you know, the Upper Trail, Upper Charles Trail Implementation Meeting and then the Metro West, uh, Trails Forum. So I'm gonna turn that over to Yolanda to talk about the, uh, what, what was it called? It was the?
The Metro West, well, it was sponsored by the Metro West Regional Collaborative and MAPC, and it's our annual Trails Forum.
Yeah.
So the excitement, it was held in Framingham, it was held at Loring Arena. If you have not been to Loring Arena in the last five years since they did the addition, you gotta go. It's, they have this great space upstairs, so that's just one thing. What was nice was, so this, the, the Trails Project, and I spoke about this at the meeting, a lot of it, there was the Upper Charles Trail that was being created, so Holliston was doing their part, Milford was doing their part. Even just before Ashland started doing this part, the Metro West Regional Collaborative brought a number of people, not only from our region, but from other regions, here to Ashland Town Hall. And we had people spread out and looking at maps and, okay, we have this trail and we have that trail. And how can we make connections and what connections need to be made? And the, the excitement and the palpable interest and, and enthusiasm from that meeting, and again, I wanna say it was in thirteen or fourteen, has carried through. We're now in twenty twenty-three. And we've had a number of these forums, we've had them almost every year since twenty seventeen, except for COVID. And because of the work being done with David Lutzenheimer, who works for MAPC, and his landline project, it's one of the reasons that the east, the, the north-south, the east coast greenway that's gonna go all the way from Maine down to Florida is gonna be coming through Framingham, Sherborne, Milford and Holliston now. And, and they're gonna be able to connect into Ashland and do our portion of the Upper Charles Trail. So it was great to hear the excitement and the discussion. So it's, the, the timing for us to move our Upper Charles Trails Project to a priority project, I think, it, it worked really well. I think, you know, it couldn't be, it couldn't be a priority project as we did some of these other things. We've been moving it along slowly. Now it's a priority project for the town, and we're seeing this work in the Metro West area. So Framingham, Sherborne, Holliston, Ashland are working together to find the connection, to work with CSX, to see how they can get into Sherborne and then connect into Ashland. And there is commitment from this org, from this Metro West organization to make sure that Ashland's portion of the Upper Charles Trail is easy to get to. They're talking about what they call a roundabout. If you've ever been on the trail in, on Cape Cod, there's a couple of points where it's a circle and you can go in one of three directions. So that's the goal that's gonna be happening here. I'm not sure if it'll be actually be in Framingham or Sherborne, but there'll be a circle and you'll be coming from Framingham and you can either go into Ashland and continue that way, or you'll be able to go down into Sherborne and Holliston. Is it happening tomorrow? No. Is it gonna hopefully happen in the next five years? That's the goal. But part of it will depend on the discussion and the negotiations between Framingham and CSX. But there's real excitement and it's, it's, it used to be like really far down that we might see this, but it's, it, the, the view of it is getting closer and closer. And the excitement in this forum was, it was real and people were excited and there was so much discussion and what Framingham is working on already. So it's, it's one of those projects that I keep telling people, we've only been working on our trail actively for about eight or nine years. It took Holliston twenty years to finish theirs and they had an empty rail bed. And part of it was the negotiations with CSX. I think once we see Framingham, you know, can make their discussion and, and purchase their portion, and now that we're actively looking at our trail, we, you know, will it be all off-road? Maybe not. But there's, there, as the saying goes, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Or the, the, what they were saying at the meeting was that we're, we're gonna make it past the goal, right? We're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make that touchdown and it's a little bit closer, so.
Thank you, Yolanda.
You're welcome.
Yolanda, if I could just ask, so.
Sure.
So how, how do they help us? What, how do, does their support help make this happen?
So it helps with the conversation, 'cause otherwise, you know, Ashland would stop at, at the end of Ashland. And then now, at least, we know where our connection into Framingham is going to be, right? So at some point, Hopkinton is also being brought into the discussion. Okay, how are we gonna connect to Hopkinton and their trail to then go down to Milford? So by having a regional discussion and by working with MAPC, who, th, th, this particular gentleman, like, that's what he does, is he looks at trails and how he can make these connections. So I think, uh, I think that's where the help is.
And financial assistance or anything along those lines?
Well, there has been some, but also just guidance, right? They, um, through MAPC, they have a program called DLTA, where if you put in a certain amount of money, they potentially could put in a certain amount of money to help with stuff. They give guidance on writing grants and, okay, there's this, they remind you that, like, right now, there's a grant cycle open. We're not quite ready to apply for that. But just the, by having the advocacy of not just Ashland and Holliston and each community on their own, by having the combined advocacy of each town, as well as our regional collaborative, as well as MAPC, it can help this whole thing grow and eventually get accomplished.
And what, do they help, in terms of advocacy, do they help with, um, you know, conversations with private property owners in town?
Um, I don't think we'll use them for that. I don't, I don't think from that perspective. It's more advocacy in helping us get material, right? So if you're, if, if we, when we start going to some of our private landowners and the private landowners goes, well, I don't want that in my backyard.
Right.
We can reach out and say, okay, well, let, let's have you talk to someone in Holliston who had this and now has this in their backyard and realizes that property, your property value actually goes up if you have a trail accessible. Because it now lets you go, you can walk out your backyard, hop on your bike.
Yeah.
And do a third, you know, potent, you know, long-term, it'll be, you'll be able to do a thirty-mile loop. Oh, and then you'll be able to go to Framingham, which will then take you up to the Minuteman, which is in, in Lexington. Oh, and by the way, you can then take that all the way into Boston and all the way to Northampton.
And, and what does a trail, um, actually look like in terms of, to be, to qualify as part of this trail? Does it have to be stone dust? Does it have to be?
It can be, it can be either, and you as a community get to decide how you're gonna do. Holliston is stone dust.
Okay.
'Cause they've, at, right now, have decided not to pave. Milford, if you ride Milford's trail, they are, they are paved.
So it, it has to be one of those two things?
Well.
It's not just where I go out with my sickle and I say, okay.
Well, that's an interesting question, Claudia.
But it can start with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll kind of, we'll get in, we're, we're gonna get into some of those in our own Upper Charles Trail, which we're gonna talk about as well. But, um, you're asking a lot of, I just wanted to, you know, um, thank you for that presentation, uh, Yolanda. The, I was, uh, the only I, I would just kind of add and summarize is that it was a great turnout from Ashland folks there. We had a number of members and, uh, um, Beck, who was there? There was some staffers there.
Sophia, yep.
Were there, and of course, and Peter as well, yeah.
Stephanie, our sustainability.
Sam.
That's right, Sam.
Samantha.
So we had like two, yeah, three, four, uh, staff there.
Yep.
And it was, uh, really, um, an energetic, um, meeting, talk about this regional trail.
There was food there, so.
There was food.
There was food, breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was, okay, yeah. But, uh, one thing I would add, just to kind of clarify, or not, but, um, so our section, uh, comes off the Dyke Trail, heads into Sherburne, um, and then that's where the, it runs into the CSX tracks, which is the key area to get control of. And, and, you know, I was happy to see there was a lot of support and acknowledgement and understanding of Ashland's position in this, as part of that. So that was, you know, it was all good news. It was a lot of great stuff going on.
That was one, that was one of your concerns in the beginning.
Yes, yeah.
That Ashland was gonna be kept out of that whole conversation, which was the reason why we wanted to make sure Ashland had a voice in this whole discussion, so we wouldn't be left out.
Yeah, so it was, it was good all around and, you know, kudos to Yolanda and the other folks there that have been working on this for years. And, uh, that, oh, the other, uh, thing I got out of it, and this, it's really relevant to us, is what Lautenheiser said and Yolanda spoke a little bit to that, is like, you know, get a trail doing something. It doesn't have to be perfect. Do what you can, improve it later, but let's get a connection going that shows people what can happen. And that's really very relevant to our concerns and what we're trying to do, because, you know, we don't have a rail bed. So that's always been our big challenge, so, um, so in the other part, uh, I kind of lumped in with this. We had, you know, as you, uh, as you, as I think you remember, that we have the, we formed the Upper Charles Implementation Team, uh, which consists of Peter, Michael, myself, Tony, Joel, and Alvaro.
And Alvaro.
And Jen. So we've met, I think, twi, have we met?
We've met twice.
Twice, yeah. And so we had a interesting meeting last, last week, Michael, so I'll let you kind of start it off and summarize what you got out of that.
Yeah, so what's, um, what we've chosen to focus on first are the properties that are owned and/or controlled by Ashland that are on the route. And to do a deep dive into those and to see if there are any, any prohibitions, um, or any obstacles that we need to figure out.
Meaning restrictions or anything like that.
Or deed, you know, deed restrictions. And, and we actually turned out, turned up one right now, which is that High Street one that we talked about the easement on when we were having the discussion about the warrant. Um, so we can't put a trail there, so, so we have to, you know, fortunately, that's not gonna put too big a hiccup in the whole trail. But, um, we're doing a little bit more of a deeper dive into, uh, into those properties. Similarly, um, Tony and, and Rob both went to the school committee, um, and had basically a, a re-kickstart.
And Judy went as well.
And Judy, Judy went as well, so, um, and had a good discussion with them. And I think Paul Kendall is gonna, you know, now that he has all this free time on his hands, is now going.
Well, they actually had a sidewalk, um, that's what Joel presented, you know, which is actually, I'm just, sorry to interrupt, but just to, uh, they had a sidewalk with, uh, Paul and, um, the members of the subcommittee. And they actually kind of mapped out a rough route, uh, from, uh, to, uh, uh, to get across the high school and on to the, yeah. So, which seemed to be plausible and agreeable. And, um, you know, Paul thought that the school committee would support that particular route, uh, which I can talk about if people are interested. But it basically, you know, coming into the high school property somewhere near, uh, this, this cemetery property, near the softball field. And as you face the high school, going around to the right on the ridge of rock above, and then, uh, somehow getting over the Devil's Den area and then to the right of the, and continuing to the right and near the baseball backstop, but separated from the baseball backstop. And then getting onto the power line right away and then to Cedar Street. So that's, and there was kind of a agreement that there's some issues there that need to be dealt with, but it's, seems like a plausible route through the high school and seemed like, you know, students could use it and they could get to the high school. So anyway, so I interrupted.
No, no, I was.
That was a little aside about the school committee, so.
Well, and I think the, the one thing I was gonna mention, um, after that was that our, one of our next steps is to have a sidewalk, especially along the cemetery site, because that's, um, yeah, obviously, that's, that's gonna be a sensitive topic. And, um, just kind of getting our ducks in a row with that.
Yeah.
I guess the other thing I would add is that certainly, it wasn't discussed at this last forum, but DCR is supportive. And DCR is looking to work with us to help create our trail through the state park section, so.
Good point, yeah.
In both Ashland and Hopkinton State Park, 'cause it's gonna be, that's how we're connecting, or as of, right now, that's how we're connecting to Hopkinton's section of the Upper Charles Trail, is through the Hopkinton State Park.
And, and just to add, you know, Rob, you talked about, um, you know, how there's comments that we should, you know, make sure we get a trail built, even though it's, it wouldn't necessarily be perfect or the ideal trail. But, um, that also reminds me, the engineering for the one thirty-five sidewalks include space for a four-foot bike lane, um, so.
That's exciting. That's good.
'Cause I think ideally, what we would wanna do is if you're in Framing, if you're on Route Th, one thirty-five in Framingham, they have sidewalks and a bike lane, and then it stops when you hit Ashland. I think at some point, as we're looking at our street plans, we should do the same thing for all of one thirty-five, from our border to the Hopkinton border, so.
So we're gonna have, like, at least the on-road stuff, we're gonna have bits and pieces.
Yeah.
So, for example, eventually, there will be a bike lane painted on Summer Street. Um, we've got bike lanes on front and sharrows, which I know are certainly not ideal on Main Street. But we'll start eventually connecting them and putting them together. But if we can start laying the groundwork now, as we're doing roadwork.
Yep.
Yeah.
Can make a difference.
Complete streets.
And I don't, uh, it's, one of the things that, um, we did talk about at the meeting that's probably worth sharing, I think, um, and they, uh, was, you know, going back to your issue with the High Street law, at one point, the route, if you, you probably, hard to remember, but going off around, off High Street onto the town land and thence, you know, to the Boy Scout, the Big Indian trustees, and then the Hopkinton Park. That, there's a number of issues with that route. I mean, Big Indian access was one of the issues, but there's a number of others. Uh, essentially, the town land has a lot of restrictions on it. So right now, in terms of, we're looking at going down, um, from High Street going down, uh, what was it?
Whitmore.
Whitmore, uh, thence to, is it Howe Street then, after, at the end of Whitmore, or? Yeah, so and that's how to get to the high school. That's an on-road bike trail. So that's kind of what we're looking at now, so, uh, because the other ones really, I mean, that's the ideal route, but there's a number of issues. So that goes to, it's an on-road trail. So that's the latest thinking.
Which you go. Which you go on the bike trail and in, on the Cape and you have that, I think, heading into, I forget which community, but you, you know, you, the trail ends and you're in a neighborhood and you follow that around. You go up over a bridge and then eventually you get to the trail again. So I think people are used to that if, if you don't have an empty rail bed, so.
Yeah, so anyway, that's kind of what, that's the latest thinking, so I thought I'd share that with people.
Thank you.
Anything else we should talk about?
No.
We're gonna schedule another meeting to continue the process.
Implementation team, yep.
The other thing, there is a number of funding available. We've identified, just to remind folks, cause I forget myself, that we have identified various sources of funding for the trail engineering next. So I think we're, and that's in Mike's spreadsheet. Okay.
We've got all these agencies and I'm excited for us. They don't have money to offer us, right? A lot of people are excited.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're in a unique time that we do have, we do have the funding, so a lot of it's just the procedural stuff.
We have some funding here in town, but I think the other thing is, it, it's not gonna be just this year. I think it's, it's one of those things that trails have, has become something that people realize is a good thing for, for sustainability and getting cars off the road and getting people moving and active. So it's not just gonna be a year or two. I think it's gonna be multiple years that we're gonna see this funding that we can then, once we're in a better place, we can apply for some more of the grants that would help us do more of the work.
And we can also like, I mean, depending on when we, when we think we need specific funds and what it looks like. I know that our legislative delegation reaches out to us, asking us if there's any projects and things that we are looking for.
Right.
Funding for, and I know Representative Lewis has, has been a big supporter of trails for us and so.
Yeah, there's Spilker as well.
Yeah, so I, I think that that's another avenue as we kind of get, get moving through this.
The other, the other thing is we're looking at putting this on the tip. So, and tip funding for trails is huge. I mean, if you look at what they did in Natick and Framingham, the, the railroad bridge that goes over Route Nine.
Did they do, they did that?
That was tip.
Oh, wow, okay.
That was transportation infrastructure program funding.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, that was millions of dollars.
So I know when we did the, the One Twenty-six project, the tip was kind of, it was a long time, time horizon for that? Is that the same for something that's a trail project or is it a little bit different?
It depends on what they have. So sometimes what happens with the tip program, and I don't, won't go into a lot of details, is they have projects planned and then either because something's not available, they might push it out and then they have money available to say, oh, okay, we have an extra five million dollars. Oh, here's this program that's currently on a back year, but their engineering is done. They have all the land and they're ready to move forward.
Yeah.
And they could pull it in. So that's where we need to get to is have all the land lined up, have our engineering done for the whole route.
Yeah.
Go toward, go for the, go for the tip funding and then keep advocating for it and saying, okay, we're here. Oh, look, you, oh, bring it, so.
And that might be another area where like MAPC and the Regional Collaborative might be able to help with the advocacy part, portion of it, because they may be able to, yeah.
We support each other on tip projects.
So, but anyways, that's a whole nother, I don't wanna get.
And our legislative delegation as well, so.
Big role on that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Yeah, that's exciting and we're moving ahead, so that's great. Um, so the next is the consent agenda. I do wanna pull a few things, um, I think, A, the sessions. I did ask Susan, uh, for a correction to the minutes and also I do wanna note that Tim Henderson is Item G is actually here physically, so I'd like to pull him from the consent agenda. Is there any other items?
Nope.
No.
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus Items A and Item G.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, others, uh, opposed, none, consent agenda is accepted with the exception of Items of A and G. Okay, so Item A is just a, a quick, I don't know, Susan, if you have it or should I read the? I just asked for one correction to my statement on, on Israel, which was just to clarify, um, um. It, it originally said something, uh, that Shear added his own statement. He hopes that people in Israel and US leaders use their power and wisdom when it comes to civilians in Palestine. I, I corrected that to, he hopes that Israel and US leaders use their power wisely when it comes to civilians in Palas- in Palestine. So, um, that's the one, the one correction I would ask to make, so.
Okay, so motion to accept the regular session minutes from October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three with the revision that Rob has mentioned.
All those in favor accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, minutes are accepted. Thank you. And now Item G, I will, um, so, um, at their last meeting, the Ashland Upper Charles Trail Committee did vote to recommend, uh, Mr. Henderson, uh, be appointed to the committee. There is a vacancy. And I think, um, so he's here tonight and he wanted to come, so I said, let's chat with Tim and talk about the trail. So Tim, why don't you come up? Yeah, come on up and speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you. So, um, I don't know if you just, uh, just wanna tell us a little bit about, you know, your background and relevant to the trail and why you wanna be on the Ashland Upper Charles Trail?
Sure, um, I've, uh, I'm Tim Henderson. I live on Woodridge Lane and, uh, I've lived in Ashland for thirty-six years and, uh, I've, you know, biked in my whole life, but I've been more, a very active biker the last, since the pandemic really. Once I was, you know, couldn't go anywhere, I, I bought a bike and started riding a lot. We were in Seattle, Washington at the time, but when we came back here, it was, uh, interesting to learn my way around, you know, the, the, you know, how to get around Ashland because the, uh, uh, as he, as we've discussed here, there are, uh, isn't an easy way to get, you know, you're on the roads most of the time. And I got to explore the, the, uh, trails all over, you know, this area and there's, uh, was encouraged to, you know, get involved with the Upper Charles Trail Committee cause seeing what the, the trail does in the other towns and to see if, you know, if Ashland can, if I can help any way to, um, you know, be part of that and make that, uh, be a, a real thing, that would be great. Um, my background is, uh, I, my education is actually civil engineering and I, but I spent forty years as an aerospace engineer and I'm recently retired, so I have lots of time to help if I can with any of this. So, thank you for your consideration and, uh, I look forward to this.
Yeah, questions, thoughts, comments? Go ahead.
So thank you very much for, for wanting to be a part of this. I think that you're, um, wanting to, to join at a really good time. Obviously, we were just having a, a, a good discussion of sort of where, where the trajectory's going. So, um, so I just wanted to say thank you for, for, for stepping up and being an official member of the Upper Charles Trail and, um, it's a good group of people, so, yeah.
It is, you know, I, I live across the street from Joel, so that's it, that's why.
So, so you've been living the trail vicariously through Joel?
Right, and I ride with the Bike Club and so that's it. I've got, you know, I know Joel, you know, I've known Joel since he built the, since they built the house, so you know, that's it, so.
Okay, great, well, thank you. That's it for me.
Question, other questions or comments, uh, any thoughts?
No, I'd too just say thank you very much. I've known the Hendersons for quite a few years with, through their children and that and, uh, so, uh, you know, appreciate your stepping up. You know, we find things to do in retirement, don't we?
That's right. It's always something to do. People ask me, you know, what do you do? It's like, I got, I got a million things to do. I don't have enough time to be retired, so.
There you go.
Thanks, Yolanda. Appreciate you stepping up and doing what you wanna do.
Thank you.
That you'd like to do.
I do, I was gonna say, this'll be fun, so.
Yeah, great.
I would just like to add, I, um, I think it's great that you're stepping up and I think I was just in your house the other day, okay.
You were, you were, I wanna make sure you'd made that connection, so.
Well, I remember the last name.
You want to be southern and you don't know who they are?
Well.
This, I gotta hear this.
I didn't go to see, I didn't, I didn't go to see Tim. I went to see his wife and as many of you know, they have a different last name. So anyway, by the way, I, I loved your skeleton in the yard.
Well, now that, now that Halloween's over, the Santa hat's going on tomorrow, so.
There you go, there you go. But I just wanna say thank you for stepping up. I think your experience and, and certainly now your enthusiasm for bike riding will, will, will certainly help.
It should be fun, you know, I, I enjoy, you know, viewing from afar the, the various other projects around town. So that's it, is that we really start working on the trail here. This should be, be great.
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 Well, I move that we appoint Timothy Hemmer- Henderson to the Upper Charles Trail Committee with a term that expires on eight thirty-one twenty-six. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor appointing Mr. Henderson, the Upper Charles Trail Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. You are appointed, sir. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for volunteering.
Great, and thanks for coming in. All right, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, Town Manager Report.
Sure, so, um, I can start off with the legislative meeting, our quarterly legislative meeting that we held last Friday and, um, both Yolanda and Rob attended, uh, as well as myself, uh, and Diane from the town of Ashland. We met with, with Jack and Karen Ableman Foster and we were able to discuss quite a few issues. Uh, Rob had brought up the MBTA community zoning and, uh, we talked about the MBTA station. Um, we talked about some of our frustrations with Eversource and other utility companies. Um, and a- as we all know, we're not the only community that deals with Eversource. Um, specifically, we were talking about the downtown project and how Eversource is now saying they don't have transformers, which, you know, might push like basically the removal, removal of the poles out a bit, so, um, and Karen's already, uh, secured a meeting with Eversource for next Monday.
Oh, that's nice.
Virtual one, so it'll be good to.
Is this a surprise to them that they will?
Well, that was exactly my point, Joe. I'm like, you've, you've known about this for, for years, so, um. But anyway, I thought, I thought it was a very, very productive meeting and I'm glad, uh, I'm glad we're still continuing to do those, so.
The one thing I, you know, I brought up that the zoning, if we can, if it's realistic to tweak the zoning act, you know, this specifically, the formula that gave us the eleven hundred housing units that needed or whatever, twelve hundred, whatever it is, um, based on our housing, which again, just to review, I said, um, you know, it seems to be unfair cause we built a lot of housing that we now have to build more, whereas towns that didn't build housing have a lower, anyway, so the whole idea was that we could tweak that. And she is, Karen was optimistic about arranging a meeting with, um, uh, actually she mentioned, uh, Ed Augustus, who's the current Secretary of Executive Office of Livable Communities, but, um, and so she's, um, she's gonna arrange a meeting just to have a discussion, at least with me and maybe, I don't know, Michael, to look, talk about the details and, you know, why, what's behind those details, so we could understand and if to see if there's any room for, um, um, you know, adjusting that or changing it. And then, Michael, you brought up the, um, the prohibition on town land being part of the formula and I don't know if we had any more resolution on that.
Um, no, I, I did, so what Rob is referring to is that, um, I talked to Pete Machak, uh, last week and he said that municipally-owned land is now exempted from being able to be counted towards our acreage. Um, and so I checked with him this week and, uh, that is, that is correct. And then I went through and I looked at the guidelines and it's, um, you know, it does appear to be the case. Um, so to the extent that we were gonna use municipal land to help meet our acreage obligations, that could be in jeopardy. Uh, the other thing we talked about with relate, well, it was actually related to the bond bill. Um, the housing bond bill was accessory dwelling units and just, you know, some ambiguity, uh, regarding that and what's in the bond bill and just, um, so we'll be looking to get some clarification on that as more information comes out, you know.
So with, with ADUs, cause I know we've talked about it, you know, here and then I know that, um, there was talk about bringing it to town meeting, um, in a zoning change in general with, with ADUs. Like is that, how would, do we know how that would impact what we would be wanting to? I haven't had a chance to read.
Well, this would, basically, the state would mandate that towns would have to, uh, basically zone so ADUs could be built as of right, as of right.
In the, in the, in the housing bond bill, ADUs would be mandatory.
Good point.
Wow, it mean, that's a, that's a big change. That's a.
So we raised, actually, Michael and I think Yolanda raised that point.
It's being discussed and reviewed, but.
And, and there are definitely gonna be three versions of this, of this bond bill that floats around. So, we'll see how the Senate and the House come up with theirs.
Any change in their thinking and mindset, that's true.
Well, I know, you know, I'm sure that their thinking is that, you know, they wanna create housing and ADU is an easy way to do it. It just may or may not have unintended consequences if we don't control sort of how those, that approval goes through.
Yeah, that's an interesting point.
So, but anyway, but, um, I haven't had a chance to, to, to take a look at it yet, so.
It's a hundred some odd page bond bill.
Then, yeah.
Search, Ctrl F.
I have a summary that was given to me from, or at least some of the high points, cause I'm on an MMA policy meeting, policy committee. I'll scan that and send it out to everybody so you guys can get a look at that.
That would be awesome, thank you.
Yeah, we did, um, yeah, Yolanda, you weren't here for the begin, is there anything you wanna add to this, um, discussion that maybe, Michael, we talked about the zoning changes.
Oh, from the legislative meeting?
Yeah.
No.
Um, but yeah, there was a lot of good points about the bond bill, um, and, um, and the MBTA Communities Act. Any other, did we talk about other funding or, um, other issue? Didn't really, not so much.
We talked about the earmarks and just, it was really more administrative, like making sure.
That's right, yeah.
Everything's, and that's all it did.
Yeah, so, um, so we'll continue that discussion. Um, I guess we're still optimistic about being able to implement the zoning act pretty much as is, but we'll hear more about that, I think, at our next meeting, right? That's my understanding, Joe, you think, um, you guys.
Yeah, I'm meeting this Friday, but I was gonna be having my board report.
Yeah, sure, well, we could talk, you can talk about it now if you want or for, in your board report, whatever.
I'm kinda, I'm kinda.
Sorry, I'm kinda, uh, surprised to hear about, you know, the, the land issue.
Land, yeah.
Because that definitely changes the whole thought process right now.
Yeah.
Especially in and around the area that we're, we're looking at.
Yep.
So I can't wait to see what happens Friday morning.
Yeah, so it'll be an interesting discussion, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Let me ask a question. I, I don't wanna get too off topic, but just kind of related to that. So if we were to rezone the, um, the RTA, the, um, RTD, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, where we have land that's going to be coming back to the town, but it isn't, it's still in litigation?
Huh.
Like how does?
Which, is that?
UGC, yeah. I mean, I don't know. I'm just curious, like.
That's an interesting, maybe we don't bring it up and.
[laughing]
Yeah.
Maybe we zone and then.
Yeah, it's not our land.
It's not our land yet.
That's right.
I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, we, we actually could look at the UGC property and even the property that wouldn't be coming back to the town and look at rezoning that.
Okay, I was just curious. I don't wanna get us off topic, but.
No, but that's a good, we were gonna discuss it one way or the other, I think.
You're more than welcome to come Friday.
Nope, nope, I'm good. You've got this handled. You've got it handled, my friend.
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah, that was a good, good meeting. I think we got a great legislative delegation. There's a lot going on. Any, anybody wanna, anything else to add to that one?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
No, just, uh, the next item on the agenda is an update on crime trends or security issues and, uh, Ashland is still a pretty safe community, or is still a very safe community. I shouldn't say pretty. That's, where you gotta be careful. You gotta choose your words carefully.
Right.
Um, there has been though in Massachusetts, a rash of burglaries on, um, uh, in South Asian households and, you know, Indian, Sri Lankan, you know, um, from that, uh, ethnicities from that part of the globe. And, uh, so obviously, um, they constitute like fifteen, maybe a little bit more, fifteen percent or more of our population, so it's something that, you know, we're keeping an eye on. So there's, um, that's really it on that issue.
Could I, I just, you know, I ca- I brought this up because I read the Ashland Police Department's Facebook posting about home security and, which I thought was excellent. And I said, oh, okay, so is there something going on? And so I said, let's discuss it. And so Michael's just clarifying, this is a general kind of advisory about, and it was related to the South Asian incident where some people were being burglarized, so.
It was in the news maybe a month ago.
Right, so, and I just wanna make it clear, so we haven't had any issues here in, in Ashland. I just, you know, so I want people who are watching to know that they're safe. It's just something that we're keeping an eye on and I, you know, I should also mention under this that, uh, you know, I don't have the hard statistics with me right now, but, um, we are seeing an increase in traffic stops and, um, you know, hopefully we'll see a, a corresponding impact in terms of speeding and things of that nature as well.
That's interesting, cause that is a recurring issue.
It is, it is, so, um, update on the annual town forest?
Yeah, so just let me intro just briefly. I mean, just, um, we had, you know, the Town Forest Committee hosted, I think was fairly prominent and I'm not up on all the details, but it seemed like a, a fairly prominent and important event, um, that DCR does this Town Forest and we hosted it this year and, uh, Michael attended. I don't, did, was anyone else attend? So Claudia was there as well, great. So I'll turn it over to you guys to just chat about it.
Yeah, I thought, um, so it is a relatively, um, you know, it's. Yeah, I thought, um, so it is a relatively, um, you know, it's a statewide conference put on by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And this was the first year that they had it in person since the pandemic, so, uh, it was even more special. And we had over a hundred people at the community center, uh, from as far away as Pittsfield and on the Cape. Um, don't think I met, no, no, and I met, um, some people from northeastern Massachusetts as well. But, uh, it was a great, a great conference that, you know, the beginning of the day was focused on presentations and and learning and educational sessions, um, of which two Ashland residents presented, Kara Hume and also Jennifer Shacken, who is part of the Na, New England Forestry, Forestry Foundation. Jennifer gave a great presentation on climate change and the impacts on the forest. And Kara did one on basically a round table with some of the Girl Scouts and some of the teenagers in town about, you know, forest as community. So they did a great job and just give kudos to the Town Forest Committee for, um, basically being selected to host this event and then also doing all the work that they did to to put it on, put it together. That was the big, that was the morning session. The afternoon session consisted of site walks in the town forest, three different ones. And of course, it poured, but, uh, still, there were, there were quite a few people that took advantage of those. So it was, it was great. They can, they can, the Town Forest Committee and and the town, by extension, could, should be really proud of of that and the work that they're doing.
Certainly great. Claudia, anything you wanted to add to that? You went to.
Yeah, no, it was actually, I, I thoroughly enjoyed it. Um, you know, I wasn't able to stay all day because we actually had a wedding in the afternoon when it was pouring. But, um, it, it was, uh, it was very informative and, uh, you know, very interesting. And, uh, it was nice to have Ashland people presenting and and Michael was the kind of the emcee host. And, uh, he did a spectacular job, so.
Oh, thanks.
I, I'm always amazed at your multi talents.
Was he juggling or anything like that?
Nah, it's just.
Just did doing it. Great. So that's nice.
No, not for that one. And then, um, I actually have one thing that's not on the agenda. Um, and Susan, myself, and several of our department heads met with the Boston Athletic Association yesterday to talk about next year's marathon. And, um, you know, something that's always a recurring ask is if, uh, we can get more bibs to distribute to runners to fundraise for our programs and if we could get more money to help support our operations as part of the marathon. And, uh, so the BAA has increased the number of bibs to twenty-five, so an increase of three. Um, and they are also increasing our funding by ten percent to eighty thousand with a commitment to, um, increase that by two and a half percent each of the next, of the following two years. So, uh, many thanks to the BAA for that. They've got a whole new team, obviously, since, uh, Jack has taken over as president and, um.
Their sponsor now is different.
Twenty-two.
So we'll continue with the ten, the twelve for the company and then.
Me Nord?
Nord, yep.
They get twelve.
And then we'll do the other ones. Nice.
Susan, how does that strike you in terms of, I know there's been some issues or, or I guess that's my question. Do you see issues with getting folks for all those bibs or that will commit to the fundraising or?
We've got a waiting list.
Do you?
We have a waiting list and I actually sent out in anticipation of this conversation coming up. I did send out note for three people on the waitlist tonight. I'm just awaiting hearing back.
And are they all town residents or did you go outside of, are there out of town res? I just, I'm asking because the running club is interested, but there, a lot of them live outside of town. Is there any out of towners getting bibs or?
No out of towners, um, only because we had about sixty people, including out of town people this year, put in requests.
Wow. Did you say sixty? Six zero?
Six zero.
Wow. That's amazing. So.
It's all town residents that are getting bibs, it sounds like.
I think pref, preference goes to town residents if there's, if there's not a, yeah. So I guess that, you know, because we, we've talked about how we distribute bibs and that whole thing. And I know that there have been years where we've struggled to get people to run, but, you know, it sounds like maybe we need to look at it next year and see if we.
Increase the amount.
And possibly do more and and, you know.
Oh, you want more from those runners.
Well, more, so, you know, we, we do this, we do this, um, the amount of bibs to to Nord, which I think is great.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe, maybe we need to just look at that.
Yeah.
So, but, but, I mean, I think it's awesome. First of all, I think it's amazing that sixty people want to, want to run on behalf of Ashland and.
The BAA, the Boston Marathon is so popular.
It is. Well, it's one of the, it's one of the premier marathons and for us to, you know, I mean, I think, I think most charities that ask people to to raise funds are a lot higher than what we ask Ashland.
The average is twelve thousand.
Yeah, we're asking three, three, right?
That's why I think next year we need to look at, I think we need to talk to Nord beforehand and say, we're going to increase that. And I think we need to ask our runners to to raise a little more. Not a lot. Maybe it's, you know, another, another five hundred or a thousand, but.
Something like that, for some reason.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
That was an interesting statistic.
But it'll be nine thousand more that will be into the, into the, um, into the runner's account from these extra bibs, too.
But we're also increasing the amount that we want to give people, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Cool.
Very cool.
All right. Anything else, Michael?
No, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
That brings us to board reports. We'll, we can, Brandy, you're on the end this time, so we'll start with you.
Oh, my goodness. So I really don't have much, um, except for, you know, we've been really busy with the comprehensive plan. We had our last newsletter, um, go out yesterday and, um, that is kind of like, I'm, I am the, I am the, the, the main conduit with the, with the newsletter, which I totally love to do. So, um, it's totally in my, in my wheelhouse. So I guess, I guess until somebody else decides they want to, they want to do it, I'm the, uh, I'm the volunteer.
Thank you for doing it.
Sounds like you're going to be doing it for a while.
I think I'm going to be doing it for a while. So, uh, I don't see anybody else.
You got about a year and a half, so you're good.
We're good. Once a month, once a month I can handle, so.
That's interesting. So, but Melissa's not involved in that? Is communications or?
So, um, my process, so my process is, is that, you know, we really start the newsletter process when, after our, after our monthly meetings. Um, and it kind of is like a recap plus other things that we want to make sure we communicate out to the public. Um, I, I have, like, I've worked in constant contact before, which is our, our email, um, service or however you want to call it. So I put together the, the, I send out to, um, to the chairs, basically like my bullet list of things that I have to see if there's anything else that they want to include. And then, um, I work in constant contact and put it together. And then I send it out for a draft for folks to review. And then Melissa and Beth are the ones that, to do the actual, like, sending it out.
Who are you sending the draft to?
Um, the draft goes to Beth, Melissa, Michael and Courtney. And Courtney was like my, um, partner on this. Um, so the, basically gives everyone a couple of days to review it to see if there's any changes or anything else people want to add. And then, and then we send it out. So it's, it's, um, it's a good little process, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for doing that.
Um, but yeah, our next meeting for the comprehensive plan is, uh, November sixteenth, as we were talking, talking about. And, um, and then we're just preparing for, like, the forum. And, um, and, you know, that's pretty much, I think that's pretty much all I got, so.
That's enough.
Yep.
All right. Claudia, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, well, last week I had the, uh, the, uh, fun time to be able to, uh, attend the trick or treat here at Town Hall.
Oh, that too.
It was great. It was fun to see everybody all decked out and, um, a ton of people, right, that came through. I couldn't get over the number of people out on the street.
Three hundred.
Heard you ran out of candy. Yeah.
We had to make several candy rounds.
Yeah, so.
That's interesting.
That, that was awesome. Well, you know, what a great way to get people into Town Hall and to get a little bit of, you know, feel like it's theirs, right? So that, that was, uh, really great.
And then the other businesses that also participated for the first time this year, which was, was the good.
Was that the first time? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and everyone in Town Hall dressed up.
Yeah.
It was festive.
Right.
Everybody, yeah, it was good.
Yeah, there was some, I took some fun pictures. Yeah, then I had the opportunity to attend the ABA, uh, dinner or comedy night on, on Saturday night. It was pretty funny.
Oh, that's good.
They really were a pretty funny group, I thought, Mike.
Corey's an Ashland resident.
Uh, yes, he is. Yes.
Corey Rodriguez lives here in town.
Yep. No, I do. I, I know him a little bit and, uh.
Oh, that's cool.
He brought on like four other people.
Yeah, three, four.
Now, that's kind of a tradition with the ABA, right?
Yeah, this is, I think, they did it twice. Yeah, this is, I think, their third year.
Yeah, it's at least the third.
This might be the first time in person. Um, did they do it in person last year? Okay.
And I think there were two COVID ones, maybe.
Yeah.
I feel like I did that virtually a couple of times.
I know I did the first.
So is this a fundraiser for them or what?
Yes, yeah.
For the sponsorship.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was a lot of fun. Like I said, they did a great job. Um, uh, last week I also had the opportunity to, to attend at State House, the Citizens Legislative Seminar. And, um, you know, that was, that was fun. The drive-in was, uh, pretty nasty. It took me about two hours and ten minutes to go. Took me an hour to get to the other side of Natick.
Oh, my gosh.
Why was that? Was something?
Uh, I don't know.
What time of day were you trying to go in?
Oh, it was peak. I, I was supposed to be there, there. I think if we, if I wanted to go to Karen's office first, I had to go for nine o'clock, so that's what I was aiming for.
Okay.
Um, but, yeah, so I knew it was a bad time.
Take the train in.
I looked at the train and I was like, nah.
Yeah, because you got to take the red line or, you know.
And I've actually commuted in there for a short time when I work for Tom and, uh, so it was, uh, but in any case.
It's not great for south station.
Took a deep breath. Um, it was great. It was a great, uh, day. And then, uh, and Karen gave us a little extra special treatment, anybody from her district, so. So that was fun. So it, and it, you know, it was informative, too. Um, and then, whoops, geez. Uh, the, and the last thing I had was just the Town Forest, uh, the, the, that.
Great.
Meeting for the state, which was, it really was very nice. A real feather in our cap, I thought.
Cool. Uh, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of quick things. Uh, last Thursday was, uh, our annual Halloween parade and party. Uh, we had roughly three hundred families show up. It was, uh, the first time at the new school. And it was quite the experience. Uh, told everybody they made history, uh, coming into this building for the first time. Um, they were, it was a great experience. And, um, the design of that building made it a lot easier for us to do. Oh, my word, it was phenomenal. And who met us there was Deputy Dodd with his big sheriff hat, Sheriff Paul. He was there. And, uh, thanks to him, I mean, we, he just handed me a mic and everything was already ready to roll. Wireless mic, the P H system was already built into this.
Yep. It's really nice.
We're going to be wanting to hold meetings there.
You know, it's, it was, it was very, very nice. And I thank Paul, uh, and and everybody that was involved, Claudia, for, for getting this, uh, done for us. It was very, very nice. We had a lot of fun. And, um, every family, everybody was there that enjoyed it. And for the families that hadn't been in the building for the first time, their eyes were wide open. They were very, very appreciative of what the new school looks like and they can't wait to have their kids go in that building for, which is, which is great. Uh, so thank you to all those folks who made it a great night. And, um, this Friday, we have the, uh, MBTA zoning meeting. That ought to be an interesting meeting and discussion after hearing all this new information coming up. I have no idea where we're going to go. Looks like we're going to have to start from ground zero and start all over again if in fact we can't utilize, you know, the town land type of, type of thing, so. Yeah.
Well, the interesting thing is that the state did send out all these guidelines, right? Didn't they help set things up and say what land you could use and?
Well, it, it, it was very, it was very vague. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It was very vague. So, I mean, we did what we thought we had to do. And I guess my thought is just to continue doing what we're doing. So that way, if they allow that to happen, we'll be, we'll be ready for it.
Yeah.
So, uh, that and, um.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, Joe.
Oh, no, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun. I, I enjoy it. Uh, I enjoy seeing how we can try to skin a cat in different ways and, you know, make it happen for the town. So we're working on it. Um, lastly, uh, we have a portable housing trust meeting next week. Uh, we had some glitches at Zoom, so we couldn't, uh, meet the, the following, the, the prior meeting. So we have a lot to discuss and a lot of things to do, so hopefully we can, we can utilize that and maybe get things, uh, working on some properties that we have and we're taking over. So, uh, and one of them is a piece of property off of, uh, Rem and My Kitty Way in Galway. Drive that area, that, uh, that house needs to be, uh, I feel bad for the folks that reside around it, to be very honest with you. But anyway, we're working on it. We'll get that done. And, um, happy belated birthday to you, young lady. So, uh, with that, uh, that's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Yolanda?
So a couple of things. First, tomorrow morning is the Ashland Lions Senior Breakfast. I'll, I'll be there this time. I missed it last time because I was away. Couple of things coming up. So the Metro West Regional Collaborative, we have a meeting. It will be the Thursday morning after town meeting. It's via Zoom. And our discussion is going to be MBTA Communities Act and the Housing Bond Bill. So I look forward to hearing what, what our subcommittee presents on that Wednesday. And if other people are interested, the discussion is going to be what are the different communities doing? How are they doing it? And has somebody done something that we can then use?
Okay.
So that's the discussion there. Of course, we talked about the holiday stroll as part of the comprehensive plan.
Sorry, what's the date on that?
It is Thursday, November thirtieth. I mean, I know we have another meeting, but I figure it's good to get it on people's calendars. Uh, holiday stroll. And then, again, this is a little bit early, but we will be, the Lions will be selling their Christmas trees. They start the Friday after Thanksgiving and they will be on Front Street this year rather than over in back of the VFW. And then the last thing is, I missed the Town Hall trick or treating. I missed the trick or treating. But that's because I was at the Haunt. If you came to visit the Haunt, which was the Halloween scare that was done at the Metro West Outdoor YMCA. If you came by and if you couldn't figure out who I was, I was Yvette Simpson, the first person you talked to as you walked through the Haunt. So, um, it was a lot of fun. Friday and Saturday night were great. Sunday, not so much.
They made up for it.
Um, but it was, it was a lot of fun and it's nice. It's benefiting both the Hopkinton Center for the Arts and the Metro West YMCA. And that's all I got.
Great. Thanks, Yolanda. Um, I just wanted to maybe just review a few scheduling things as part of this. I mean, or just talk about next meeting. Um, I think we're getting the BAA and gift account recommendations. Is that correct? Um, and then I think we're going to do tax classification. Do we think that's going to happen? Yeah, okay. And our joint meeting with the Planning Board, which it looks like, uh, so we'll have one or two items there. Um, you know, the, assuming we can go move ahead, you guys got something on the, um, Communities Act. We'll meet with them on that.
And are we going to start with this, with the joint with the Planning Board or will that be later?
I think so. Don't, yeah, I think when we do like seven ten, seven fifteen, something like that.
Unless we wanted to do tax classification first so that.
Can, can people meet earlier?
Yeah. Did you guys hear that question? You want to meet earlier to like, like six thirty or something?
Well, if we start at six thirty, maybe we could get the tax classification.
Yeah, that sounds, does that sound good to people? I think six thirty should work.
Um, what are we allotting for the, for, I think we should have a timeframe for the Planning Board section because otherwise it could, it could end up becoming an extended conversation.
I would, yeah, well, let's, yeah, I want to he.
We'll, we'll plan on that or we'll discuss that at our.
Yeah, I think so because it'd be good to hear from these guys what they expect to recommend if it's going to be complicated and long or if we got something, you know.
Try to keep it simple.
Yeah.
Simple.
So, yeah, okay. Good point.
So this is on the fifteenth?
Yeah, November fifteenth, right?
So start at six thirty instead of seven that night.
And we'll probably do the tax classification before the Planning Board, but we'll do the, aim for around seven or so with the Planning Board. Okay. Any other big items for the next meeting? And after that, we have, um, town meeting, of course. And then we're meeting once in December. Right now, we're scheduled for just once in December. Okay. Um, the only thing I, oh, just, uh, um, I am trying to meet with, um, I saw Mayor Sisicki at that forum and he is interested in meeting and discussing the MBTA commuter rail, um, uh, the, the MBTA Advisory Board. And Michael may be there as well. Um, if, if you guys didn't hear, the Mayor Sisicki has been appointed the MBTA Board of Directors, which is like a big deal. Um, and so I just wanted to chat with him about, you know, what his agenda. And so I just wanted to chat with him about, you know, what his agenda or interest is with the MBTA, how he sees things, and also how he could work with, with us and the Commuter Rail Committee, uh, which I chair. And also talk about his appointment of somebody to attend the, um, MBTA Advisory Board, because Framingham has not been attending, they haven't had a representative. So, just kind of discussions like that. So, anybody has any particular, uh, MBTA commuter rail issues or other, uh, T issues they come up with, you know, like that?
When are they going to be done with the station?
So, I could add that, we could add that to the agenda. I'm, I'm not sure how much he knows, given that he's been on the board for like three weeks, but, yeah.
I did get some feedback, um, just with the shuttle that we have, um, that the people that are using the shuttle are, it's great in the morning because they're able to get to the station on time. The one thing I did hear is that, um, when trains are late and which trains are typically, they can be five, ten minutes late, you know, with some regularity, um, the shuttle is on a schedule and it's a posted schedule. And so a lot of times the shuttle will leave before the train gets there. So, at, in the afternoon, not terribly helpful, though.
Wait, from Framingham?
From Framingham to go back to Ashland. It leaves because it has a posted schedule, like if you look at-
Oh, my gosh, you mean they wait, they don't wait for the train?
They don't wait for the train.
What?
They don't wait for the train. So I've heard from people that have missed the shuttle to go back home, to back, go back to Ashland.
They get off the train and there's no shuttle?
There's no shuttle. No, you can't, you literally can't.
So do they have to wait?
Are they waiting a half hour or?
They're probably Ubering over to their car or, or back to Ashland, wherever they, yeah.
So the driver of the vehicle doesn't know that the whole point is to get the people off the train?
But if you check like the MBTA schedule, you will see like posted times for the shuttle and the shuttle-
I've always some common sense.
No kidding.
Don't the trains also post if they're late?
Yeah, you know, you know they're late generally.
I mean, there's texts that go out, there's, you know, alerts.
Is there posting an exact time, say, call it that train, the six-thirty train, when it arrives?
That's astonishing, so, wow.
You hope it gets to eight-sixty.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's not, it's not unusual for the train to be five, ten minutes late.
Right, it takes longer to get people off at various stops and, wow.
That leaves South Station a few minutes late, it just kind of, you know, anyway, I'm just sharing that.
That's astonishing, yeah, well, that's, wow. Thanks for that, yeah, could follow up on that, okay.
That's laughable.